Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Now if you have your speaker on here.
So even with the volume one needs to turn it down.
Alright, that was me. Alright, okay. We're not going to yours now? Yeah, alright, Reg and I'm meeting call to order at 6:05 PM. First item on the app, we have to do a roll because Glenn's on Zoom, yeah, okay, Cheryl Bresiano.
Kathy Thompson.
Chris Parkin.
Mary Lee.
John Stinson.
Karen Bryan.
Gwen Danny.
And we, even though it says it may be eligible for executive session, it's not on the agenda, so we can't do that. So with that said, I will turn it over to Sarah.
Are you sure what's on the agenda?
That that this item may be eligible for executive session. It's not written on the agenda, so we can't go into executive session.
Executive session procedural, that's up to.
Okay.
So if we wanted to.
We could, okay.
And I thought that was on the agenda.
I see it on the agenda.
I don't know what I have.
Yeah, yeah, it does say eligible.
Eligible. Yeah, okay.
Okay. I can, I can do this.
That's great.
You'll be happy, but um, you can all hear me and we're not using this, right? It's all good now, going to there or whatever.
Yeah. You can hear my voice?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Okay, so um, I don't know, John, if you want to pull the PowerPoint up real quickly. I hope that everyone is aware that we've been experiencing issues with our chillers since, actually since I took the job, but it wasn't my fault. But I kind of walked into a situation, the chillers were not functioning up to their expectations and abilities. And we, the board did agree to fund the investigation phase. So John, if you go to the next slide. So what we did first, we did an investigation and trying to determine the root cause why the chillers weren't functioning properly. We did discover that the chillers were both, are both in disrepair. The one chiller has so much calcium and hard water deposits in it that actually breached the tubing and water flooded into the unit. That unit is recommended to be replaced. The other chiller has similar calcium deposits in there from the hard water. And that chiller can be repaired without a full replacement. So obviously, our intent is to get these chillers working so that we have cooling abilities in the schools and can maintain proper temperatures. So we did contact our insurance company, Kirma, and we did file a claim and we went through with them. This has been a several month long, many month long process to go back and forth with the manufacturer, with the insurance adjuster, with various companies to try to get the best price and to figure out, you know, how we can do this in a way that is not going to severely impact the board as well. So we did have a facilities meeting before our last meeting. We had some conversation about this and I gave everyone an update at that time. The intent of tonight was we were somewhat concerned about a potential, not potential, but a planned increase in the cost of the chillers and how time had become of the essence that we get them ordered in time or get it ordered in time for the cooling season. However, I'm happy to report tonight that through lots of discussions and let's just leave it at that, through lots of discussions with the insurance company, with the vendor and everything. I'm happy to report that our insurance has agreed to pay for the entire clause for the return, for the replacement of the chiller, including the labor and the rigging and everything. They are also going to pick up the $26,367 investigation fee that we laid out. So at this point, I have the next slide and I will, I will say that, you know, we can say whether or not this is needed, but I do think it's needed because the process moving forward is we need to get the chiller ordered. We need to consider authorizing the director of finance to issue a purchase order and to, you know, pay the invoice through the capital reserve. And the process is our insurance company has given us written verification that they will reimburse us for everything, including the investigation fees. But the process is we have to lay it out and then, because I guess evidently there are some districts that would actually take the money and not replace the chiller. So that's why they did it. So I did draft this motion for consideration for the board moving forward. And I think that, again, our plan, we're going to have to have more discussion at a future meeting relating to the second chiller and how we can restore that quickly. The lead time on this chiller, when I spoke to everyone at the last facilities meeting was forty, forty-two weeks. However, now we've got them down, it's a twenty-week lead time right now. So we've got them down to twenty weeks, which gets us middle of June when we can get the second chiller. So again, it might be limited cooling capacity in the early spring, but we should be restored by midsummer.
Mike, I remember correctly, there was a question about ordering this quickly because there's going to be a coolant change.
Correct.
Coming soon. And does that leave us exposed if we have to change chiller one at some point to being on two different sets of coolant?
It does, it doesn't, it does not, it's not ideal, but it does not. And the hope is that we can, so first of all, we have until December 2024 before you can't have the new cool. However, Train is switching over their manufacturing to where they'll start using the new coolant in mid-January. So there's nothing wrong with us having the coolant in the chillers or using that coolant. It's a more of a manufacturing.
I'm just thinking about the logistics of being on two different systems at some point in the future, because if we anticipate the chiller one is going to last us more than the next eleven months, we'll be in a situation where we're two areas at once.
Yeah, no, I don't think that there's, I don't think that's going to be impactful for us. I think, I think it'll be fine.
So we're better off sticking with the soon-to-be-out-of-day technology as opposed to buying up into the new technology now?
Well, yeah, it's, it's not necessarily technology, it's, it's just the coolant. Yeah, it's, it's, it's the coolant, it's, it's more environmentally based requirements. And again, that's more associated with the disposal of it, when it's improperly disposed of and everything. It's not really a danger to the environment or anything impactful that way. It's more, you know, they switch over and making it better for the, less toxic to the environment if it's disposed of improperly.
Kind of implosion? Move that the Reg and I Board of Education authorized the Director of Finance's operations and technology to fund the chiller replacement using the capital reserve fund. Total cost will be reimbursed by our insurance carrier.
Second?
Sure.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, couple questions. How much is the total cost?
For the chiller?
Yeah.
And the replacement for the chiller two and the replacement, it's a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
And how much do we have in the capital reserve right now?
Six or seven hundred thousand. I'm sorry, I should have had that total for you.
Yeah, I'm just curious what will be left with that if we authorize this.
The one eighty is net of the twenty-six, the whole nut is two oh seven.
Yeah, how much is the total outlay?
We've already, we have already paid, we have already done the initial outlay for the investigation. So you already authorized, you already authorized that amount. And so this is, so what we will be reimbursed by our insurance carrier will be for that amount and the chiller and the rigging of the chiller and putting the, and the installation. So we've already, so the one eighty-one is the new outlay, we've already approved prior outline, outline.
The, the twenty-six remind me where did that?
That also, that also came out of capital.
Yes.
Yes.
Everything will go back in.
And everything would go back into capital, bringing our balance to approximately six ninety, approximately.
And the money will be laid out to secure the chiller. And then if we're twenty-something weeks out, for how long would we down to two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, no, so, so, okay, so, so no, we would issue a PO. We wouldn't pay on the PO until the chiller arrives. So it'll be a quick turnaround. Once the chiller arrives, they'll install it. And again, using the same vendor and the same easy I can see program, we won't have to pay the vendor until the job is complete. Once we pay, then the insurance company will reimburse us. So there should not be a long outlay for us. The twenty-something coming back, the assurance adjuster did say that they would prefer to write one check. However, if the board so directs, I'll try to go after them and tell them we want twenty-six sooner.
So I was just saying, my preference is because it's all going back into the same fund, I think one check is okay.
I don't have a problem with one check. I'm just thinking about this from a timeline perspective. We're going to be writing a check for a hundred eighty thousand dollars in or about June. And we'll probably be getting it back in or about August, I would think, just on a turn time, within thirty to sixty days, it's not unusual. Just keeping in mind, as we go into budget and capital planning season more broadly, we can't look at seven hundred thousand dollars in that account as something that can be spent in February, March, April, because we're going to be losing it right around the turn of the disc league. I don't think it changes the outcome here.
Yeah, and so typically what we did do with our capital plan is if the board approves the motion tonight, I'll adjust the capital plan to reflect that has the hundred and eighty something thousand less. And we would always do the planning based on the amount that's available.
I think we could bring that to the next order lead.
It will, it will be, yes.
And then is there anything else, I don't recall, planned that we need to, that is planned for, which is between now and then, that will draw down? It's obviously the stuff, it's on the plan, we don't know, but anything between now and then, I think we paid for everything that we had planned. That we don't have any other major repairs that we need to draw on capital between now and then that may take a reserve too long.
Right, no, no major repairs planned, other than the fact, as I stated earlier, we're going to have to have a discussion about the other chiller and the repairs that are going to be, need to be made to that chiller. But if you're referencing like any of the other projects, the, the upper gym project, they're still doing netting and stuff like that. But again, all that money has been taken into account. It's, it's, you know, the bottom line is still the bottom line, so it would still remain that, that seven hundred, you know, minus the one eighty.
The other chiller is, is not covered by the insurance?
The insurance only covers a catastrophic break. And so the fact that it didn't totally fail like the other one, it's not covered. But I will say this, it's also, it may be more costly, but more fortunate for us as well in that if the other chiller was in the same condition, we would have no cooling through the beginning of the spring and into the early summer. So, and I will also say that, once the tubing is replaced, there's nothing else on that chiller that should be subject to failing based upon this event. So it's, it's not like, you know, it's compromised now, it's just the tubing.
And then the new filtration system is going through the water.
We're also going to have a conversation about water treatments, which should be done in a more thorough manner than we're doing it right now.
And then a question on the PO, so that is effectively is payment upon installation, right? Those are the payment terms as that, that will be part of the PO that will be issued, right?
Well, yeah, we just issue a PO, but as we've done, you know, in the past with this, we've done many projects, this, it, payment is not due until completion.
So it's clear that, that we have no other obligation other than that, right? That's kind of what I'm getting. And Kirma is very, Kirma is very responsive, so I don't anticipate them holding it, holding that check for an extended period of time. Is the water bill, is the water treatment situation expected to be addressed before the new chiller is placed?
Yes.
Yes. No, but these are very good questions, I guess, before they turn them on.
So like, what was the timing again for this one to be installed?
The new one is twenty weeks.
Correct. So, so what's the impact on cooling right now with this one not working?
Well.
Since we're not going to replace it until June, it does sometimes a little warm before then?
Yes, it, yes, it does. So we should, hopefully, we'll have the other one at full capacity by that point. And then we did, we did run into this issue last spring, when this started happening. And so we were able to keep the building mainly cool. But again, full disclosure, if it's, you know, a hundred degrees on May fourth, we may get a few complaints. But it's, it's certainly not going to be able to keep the building cool enough that, you know, within reason that we can still be in school.
And I will say that it is pretty fantastic that Mike's really been able to tee this up for twenty weeks because it was the lead time of forty to fifty weeks is a, is a very long time. It's surprising even now that supply chain, you'd think that would have been remediated, if you will, but it's gotten better, but still not the case right now.
I would say that I'm very thankful for the work that Mike has done on this project and really putting it and getting it to this point with our insurance, with the vendors, teeing it all up, having the investigation. Kudos to you for all, all of that, fantastic.
Is there any risk for that twenty-two weeks? I know you've been pressing, I just want.
Yeah, there is, there absolutely is. Twenty weeks could turn into something else, without a doubt. That's why it's important for us to get the other one.
So we issue right away, we'll go get it somewhere in the order, I'll give you.
Getting Q is what it was you can.
Correct.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion, question? Okay, Gwen is still on, so just want to make sure she doesn't have any questions. John?
I'm all good, thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, all in favor? I probably have to do a roll, okay, Gwen?
I'm, I, yes.
Karen?
Sorry, guys, I'm so sorry.
John?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Mary Lee?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Chiller. Oh. Okay. Maybe they can see that, yeah? Yeah.
You know, I see it paused. You've, you're about to go to slideshow mode. Is that what you're showing?
I'm already in slide.
He's already.
This is probably the way.
May also treat it as a separate.
What's the orange side of the fence?
So you may just have to share your entire screen?
I'm maybe putting presentation.
Yeah, just start with the presentation. The screen's easier.
While she's pulling that up, we were saying that for the budget presentation, it might be really nice to do it this way, so that people have the screen right here in front of us, so that they can see it and not, and not have to do this.
Even saying I know these new project are amazing, but it's still just like, this far is even better.
Yeah.
Not going to say we're getting old, not going to say.
Mike would have changed your sign, Mike, you're right now, you're Sarah Scipani.
Everyone's getting a promotion.
For telling us that, Karen.
Wait, it's Friday?
I went to dinner party last night, they had eggs. Who's, who's?
John.
John?
You're about to become the.
We're about to become share.
Slide master. Okay, all right, is it because it's not working?
Yeah, I can't, I can go into full, full presentation, but then I can't access the share.
Oh, really? Okay. Yep, did you already share the presentations with me?
Yep. Wow. Did you get a sign?
I don't see it yet, but I'm just going to go to drive.
Cheerios.
But for sure. Sometimes the notification takes a while.
I'm not taking them home.
I see it, I see it now.
All right. The other, this is much more delicious than the bowl of Cheerios out of the coffee cup that I ate.
Thanks. I can see right here.
I'll keep them here.
Two at a time.
Do you like it, would you like a face stream?
Okay, can everybody see that? I'm just going to go.
I know, I didn't bring.
I see. Somebody just slowed and stuff. Yeah, we're good now. All right.
Gwen, can you see it? Her screen's dark.
Yeah, she just, she may just need a second.
All right, just, I can, I can see this up, hopefully Gwen will hear me. So, so a couple of slides, which I hope to, to, if I heard correctly, the board was open to what I'll call a dialogue around what we would want around officers. So, so the next, the slides really cover items two, B, C, and D on the agenda. And I think so. John, go to slide three.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, so a couple of things. Jason, you know, plug this book, The Lack of Good Description during the break, I actually listened to it over the break. And, you know, there were a couple of things I thought were relevant to this discussion. So there's a quote here, I'm not going to read it, but there are, there are words in boldface that I thought were particularly relevant to our respective roles as a board of education. And so, also, bear with me, I'm going to read a couple of things as well. Be a loud listener. When another person is talking, you want to be listening so actively that you're practically burning calories. Watch Oprah Winfrey, a true master of conversation, as she interviews them. Again, I know we're not interviewing people, but do the looping. Psychologists have a concept they call looping. That's when you repeat what someone just said in order to make sure you accurately received what they were trying to project. Looping forces you to listen more carefully. Keep the gem statement at the center. In the midst of many difficult conversations, there is what the mediator Adar Cohen calls the gem statement. This is the truth underneath this agreement, something you can both agree on. Find a disagreement under this disagreement. When arguing, the natural thing is to restate your point of view until the other person sees the way you do, you do. The more interesting thing to do is ask, why at heart do we disagree? What is, what is the value of disagreement underneath our practical disagreement? Okay, so that's just the, and I think, John, if you may, again, play that, play this video, again, indulge me, board, there's a link at the bottom of the, of the slide deck. It should work, if not, you can toggle to the other video.
I think, just so that it plays in the right screen without ads, I can add this back to quickly pivot. We'll take but a moment.
Apologies, everyone, you know, had it not been for technical difficulties, would have probably been set up ahead of time, so bear with us.
And I just want to make sure that I'm getting my sound there as well, so that you're. Do you have enough tabs up? Those are actually groups of tabs, so each one of those represents at least a hundred other tabs.
One of the biggest questions is how to build the perfect team. And in fact, about four years ago, Google invited me to come spend some time with them because they were in the middle of a big project called Project Aristotle, a huge data study to try and figure out how to build the perfect team at Google. Initially, their hypothesis was that the best teams are teams where you put people together who like each other, right? Maybe you need a good mix of extroverts and introverts, maybe you need people who are friends away from the conference room. And so they looked at the data and they did experiments and they found that who was on a team actually didn't matter at all. They couldn't find any correlations between team membership and team success. So then they started looking at how a team interacts. And this is where suddenly everything became clear. Because what they found is that the people who are on a team matter much, much less than how those people interact. That you could have enemies on a team together, or you could have strangers or friends, or people who don't get along are all introverts or all extroverts. And as long as they treat each other a certain way, as long as there's a certain culture, then that team will gel. So as they started looking at these behaviors, what they found was that there were two in particular that mattered more than anything else. The first was called equality in conversational turn-taking. During a meeting or a set of meetings, if everyone speaks at roughly the same amount, then that team is much more likely to succeed. But just speaking isn't actually enough. The second characteristic that teams need in order to do well is called ostentatious listening. That basically, in addition to encouraging you to talk more, I, as a team leader or team member, have to show you that I'm listening by doing things like repeating what you just told me or closing my computer so I can make eye contact with you. If you have these two characteristics, conversational turn-taking and ostentatious listening, it creates what psychologists refer to as psychological safety. And psychological safety is shown as the single greatest correlate with a group's success. When a group feels like they are psychologically safe with each other, you unlock their best ideas, their ability to work together, their innovative capacities. Google's fundamental belief, as is true for many other companies. Google's fundamental belief, as is true for many other companies, is that it's only when a team comes together that you actually get the best ideas out of each person and the best work at getting things done.
The ones that started night life.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, thanks, John. Okay, so the next slide, please. All right, so a couple of things, level setting, and think the, so what's the point? Okay, what, both the book and the video point the similar concepts, actively listen, take turns, loop, restate back what may have been heard or not heard. Perhaps this can gain greater understanding from that full agreement on points of view, and so we can act together in the best interest of the district. So then let's get to applying this to officer elections and perhaps in our ways of working as a board together over the next two years. Um, so a couple of slides, again, won't take a lot of time on these, so bear with me, is, are, they're intended to review the bylaws, i.e. what's required practices with respect to officer elections. The application of such bylaws in this instance have been vetted with Shipman and Goodman recently, last Friday and today, so memorializing for, for purposes of public record. A few points to reiterate. Section nine, one, one, ten of the bylaws, term of two years per office, though in the instance, someone steps down for any reason, midterm elections would be held as recently had occurred last year. Section nine, one, two, zero, it has been confirmed that general statute reference here is occurring and specific to regional boards. We literally have to break the tie by law, which I think we discussed last time. Next slide, please. Bylaws, Chair and Vice Chair, um, so a couple of points, not gonna, again, not gonna read through it, but just again, wanted to have it handy for the board to consider. Couple of points of clarification here. First, with respect to the Chair. That elected individual does not decide on committees, the board does. After that, the, the Chair would appoint the members as per item three in the, in section nine, one, two, nine. Next slide, please. And there's a link at the bottom of the slides to all of my laws. Um, and Secretary and Treasurer, fairly straightforward, um, you know, kind of validate that it's current with respect to statute. Next slide, please. Committees, um, a couple of things going on here, just to, to, I think, if I recall, the board, you know, we've got committee status quo, and so just for your awareness, the Joint ER9 Committees, Region 9 Committees, those documents, those are hot links to actual live documents that were working with the, with Central Office, um, to have it updated, and we will update this, you know, obviously, once, once the board decides on the committees, and then the, the sole upper Chair appoints the members. Um, so mentioned earlier, I mentioned earlier, the board's decision is to operate a committee. Um, it's a board's decision to operate committees, not the Chair's. The general guideline for the board is that a formal vote per se is not needed to decide whether or not to continue to operate a committee. However, if a charter does exist for the committee, it should guide ways of working. In, in that instance, where a committee charter exists, um, the board may or may not, or can or cannot, um, or can if they so choose, and can revisit charters in existence, and what that has to be considered and voted by the entire board. Okay, so with that, those are kind of ground rules, those are facts. Next slide, please. Um, with respect to, now, this is again on, an item on the agenda. This is intended to be a board discussion. So now that the must-dos have had, this is a more what I'll call subjective criteria discussion um, that I hope we can apply together in selection of our leaders, right? Because remember, we're elected for officers. It's intended to be an open discussion with conversational turn-taking. Um, these bullets are not all inclusive, but I hope at least show that I know some of you to some degree, um, and potentially capture what I think may be important to you individually and perhaps as a subset of a group, right? Um, so I'm not gonna read them, but these, I think, are at least, hopefully, somebody can align or has some view that one thing on this slide is more important than others, but that's intended for us to discuss as a board. Um, so, so I did also check with, um, Shipman and Goodman, do we have to have a motion on the floor to have a discussion? The answer was no, we can discuss it as is. And then there is, the next item is the actual officer elections by written ballot. Um, so with that said, I will just take conversation, I will apply, try to apply conversational turn-taking, um, and, uh, kind of equal opportunity, say something, and whoever goes first, um, can see to the next person who wants to go next.
Can I ask any questions, slightly, sort of a little bit of a path?
Sure.
First, thank you for putting this all together. This is supremely helpful and sort of focusing on conversation. Um, what I see in these bullets, looking at them now, is sort of two things. One is kind of process oriented, as in, how does the board feel about continuing certain past practices? And the others are sort of future looking about what is it that we want the structure of governance to look like and, and management to look like prospectively? And so that was sort of an initial observation. And then my question around sort of process is, what do we collectively want to come out of this conversation? Is it sort of a bullet list of shared understandings? Or is it just sort of an open-ended conversation that organically transitions into a conversation around this challenge?
The, the intent is to, it's, it's the, it's the latter. I mean, essentially, to, to have a discussion in hopes it will break our tie, which I believe everyone had, or most people had, um, were open to having that kind of discussion from our last meeting in December, right? Because we, we could have easily chosen to flip the coin at that time. Um, what we chose, we, we did, you asked, we realized that let's have this interim officership, if you will, and, uh, we'll talk about it again in January. I hope that clarifies, but please, if, if there's any.
Yeah, that, that's helpful, uh, certainly, as far as how it sort of transitions into that. I guess then the question is, that we're, we're sort of on an edge between a conversation about what do we want this to look like? And really, an interview of the two folks who want to be Chair, and how do they align to these questions? And so, do we want to have them tell us about what they think about these things? Or do we want to have an organic conversation about where this all is? And then let them tell us how they align or don't align to the group's consensus?
I, I would prefer to have, um, without bias, right? Without having any bias, which we all, well, we all have, because we have split votes. Um, perhaps have each individual board member share or, and talk about what they feel is a priority. And, and then, and then if the board so chooses, then the, the two candidates or a candidate or whoever, right? And then perhaps respond to it. Is that, is that reasonable for the group?
Um, so with that said, can I jump in?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Um, so I think we have a fantastic board here, all of us. Um, be excited, but, um, I, I really, I, I appreciate working with all of you, um, without a doubt. Um, and if we're looking at the criteria here, which are, you know, many of the things that I did consider in my support for Todd, I would like to renominate Todd to be Chair because I do believe that, you know, he's got the experience that's, you know, grounded in Region 9. We saw him, we all saw him through those very trying times of pandemic, um, when, uh, conditions were less than ideal. When, um, a couple of us, Karen and I, in fact, um, joined the board just to base, um, uh, you know, dealing with the budget, and then kaboom, we went right into being all remote, and there was a lot of controversy. And I know that all of the boards, Redding, Houston, and Region 9 dealt with it. Um, where, you know, we have the remote meetings, and a lot of people joined who, um, I'm not sure were quite so productive and actually made it very difficult for the school district to operate, for our administrators, for our teachers, to do their jobs in educating our kids. And it's very impressed with the way that Todd handled all of that pressure. Um, I served with him on the Pension Committee and the Facilities and Fields Committee. Um, he was, uh, is Chair of the Pension Committee. Um, and has just always handled it with, um, great patience. Um, a lot of good questioning, analysis. Um, and, you know, listening to everybody's opinion and, you know, understanding that our collective role here as individual board members and as a board solely for the sake of making sure that the kids in this school get a great education. Um, and balancing that with the, um, ability of our townspeople to pay the tax dollars that are required for that to happen.
Thomas, questions? Any of the, any of these ideas resonate with anyone? Don't resonate with anyone?
I guess I would ask Mary Lee, in her comments with respect to how your comments relate to the bullets on the screen and which you would sort of prioritize when it comes to qualifications for leadership?
Um, in terms of these bullet points? Um, I'm trying to think. Um, well, I, I guess I have a difficulty with the fact that, no offense, Chris, but you're holding me, you know, holding me to these particular bullet points when, you know, in what I've brought out, um, yes, dealt with management and meetings and communication with administration. Definitely, that was, you know, something that was huge during, um, uh, you know, anybody's tenure as, as Chairperson. Um, and the relevance, experience specific to Region 9, relevant to Region 9. Um, you know, clearly, um, the vision for governance of Region 9. Um, you know, yes, Todd has historical traditions. He does have balanced leadership, um, proportionate to the voter, simple board majority, and that too.
But I think that.
But the point, the, I think, more to the point, you know, and, and how I'm coming into and how I, I make, how I made my decision was that Todd does have this experience with Region 9. He's been on the board for quite some time, which gives an advantage to anybody who's not been on the board in dealing specifically with our high school. Um, and knowing how he has handled the difficult, um, times that we have had and how, um, cool-headed he's been. Um, and able to hear, you know, and, and talking about listeners. He's a listener, you know, he doesn't feel the need to talk all of the time. He's willing to listen. And, you know, I, I don't know, because I haven't served with John, you know, he's been on, um, he's in. So I, I can't speak specifically, and I can't say that John has listened, you know? That, that would not be a reasonable statement, or would I, would I wanna say that? You know, it is just, I feel like we have gone through so many changes um, within this district over the last foreign change years. Um, that it is nice to have the consistency, and not just for consistency's sake, but just so they know the kind of, um, leader of this board that Todd has been and will be again. So, I, I'm sorry if I play politician here, I didn't really answer your question, but.
My question was prompted by Cheryl's prompt, which was sort of to talk about what our vision for this board is, and, and what I heard was more of a nominating speech for Todd. And so I'm just trying to, to, to try to steer back to, are we having a collaborative discussion about the board's priorities? Or are we gonna start giving some speeches, and I'd rather do the one where.
Oh, well, because I was kind of like jumping a couple of, jumping, going right to the endpoint of, you know, what the whole point of our conversation was.
Right, and I, I gather, Cheryl, the point of the conversation was to come around to consensus around what governance looks like, and that would allow people to then map that upon folks who are interested in taking those decisions.
And, and, and I think personally, whether I prevail if I did for Chair or Todd does, I think we both benefit in a really big way from hearing, um, each of board members about the way that they think about vision for governance, the way that they prioritize historic traditions versus new ideas, like all of those kinds of things, and are enormously beneficial whether or not they, you know, if we're, we're Chair, and for whoever does become Chair, if we do end up, um, choosing bylaws. There's something about that that feels arbitrary, right? That feels like, how could you leave your destiny, like, like the, the leadership of this important institution to flipping a coin? But I think if we both hear, and we also participate in saying, well, here's how I think about that, and then we hear from our colleagues, I think it helps us to ensure that whichever way that coin lands, we, we end up in a good place.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, I agree completely, and, and, you know, um, though it would seem, you know, brain fart or whatever, and it is a little bit arbitrary. I mean, we're dealing with, you know, two people who, um, are both very good people. You know, it's not like we're choosing to, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if I can help guide with discussion, this will help, right? Right, um, you know, if, if we can try to just speak about, I guess, without necessarily sharing where people voted, you know, what's important for you to have to vote, right? To, to be able to make that decision under leaders. I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Lee, I think what you're hearing, what, what I'm hearing is that for you, the stability, tradition, the continuity is important for you. Those are important charac- characteristics, right? Separate from the person, those are important to you. Is that correct in totality? So, so you'd rather have that than, than perhaps some of the less traditional things or less, you know, less change? Is that, is that, is that fair?
Good group thing, by the way. To an extent, but I wouldn't want to, um, have, I wouldn't wanna lessen or minimize, um, my, just my experience with the leadership that I see. As opposed to it being just, oh, just because he, he's been on the board for a while, and, you know, he's, it's, it balances with that.
I got it.
It's, he's done a, a very good job, I think.
So others, in the spirit of taking turns, um, again, any criteria here that's important to you as, in, in your leaders, right? Not agnostic from the person, um, as well as, you know, anything else, right? And then we can do the same thing. Karen?
Um, while I can, I really do appreciate, you know, the tradition and historical, you know, uh, leadership role, I also see that we have an opportunity, now that we're out of COVID, going forward, to be innovative, to embrace new technologies, to embrace new ideas. Um, I think that looking at what Dr. McKinnon went to accomplish, I think we really have to sort of be bold and make some bold choices and, and all of us try to think ahead and be innovative on, in our own.
So, for the loop. And I'm gonna try to keep this within timetable as well, reasonable timetable. So, so more innovation, um, but respect and deference for, and don't forget about whatever traditions are in place.
No, because I mean, honestly, you know, when Mike was Chair, he had so much historical knowledge that was really valuable at some time. I mean, you know, and, and the same, you know, Todd, I mean, I was new. You were new, you were new, I mean, there was, there were a lot of things that would come up that they would say, oh, this happened this many years ago. I mean, that is, that is very valuable. I'm, I'm no, in no way minimizing that. And I am saying that whoever is Chair, we need to look forward. We need to be forward-thinking now. We have the opportunity to really improve this school. There's so much we can do. That's, that's my thought. I really, I want us to be a great school. We are a great school, but a really great school.
Kathy? I don't want to pick off people, but, but, you know, I want to be fair, uh, or Gwen. Just because, because we haven't yet spoken, and, and John and Todd, I haven't forgotten about you, but I wanted you to look back around, if that's okay, okay. Kathy or Gwen, I don't know if you have anything that you want to speak to specifically on this list or anything else that's not in this, with respect to criteria of, that you want in your officers. Gwen.
Okay, I, I can, I can go, um, quickly, um, I think. That for me, uh, when I, uh, I was going to go back in time a little bit and. When I first, my kids were little, um, region nine was in a really bad place. Um, to the point that like we were selling T-shirts for the PTA in the elementary school and. We wouldn't make any in black and gold or even yellow. Because the association with region nine and the failed projects was so sort of toxic. Um, and it took a long time to dig out of that. And over the past six years, the way that this board has functioned has been, um, really pretty amazing. Um, and I've been really proud of the work that we've accomplished and I think that. Todd has been a big part of that leadership and so. I'm not talking about going, you know, honoring ancient traditions or history or anything, I'm just talking about. A really very recent excellent track record, um, and I'm sorry, I should not have said a name there, this, that this board has. Has had, and I would, I would like to continue on the trajectory, um, that I feel like we've been on. Um, where we have been making some, some really solid improvements. Um, and we've done a terrific job of maintaining voter, uh, taxpayer confidence. And I, that's, so that's my, my primary goal would be to continue, um, on the successful path that we've been on and to continue to. Uh, keep the confidence of the voters and the whole community.
Just because I don't want to, I don't want to be, I want to be fair, everybody move back, um, I, I think, uh, what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is, you know, trajectory. Um, continuing from our successes, um, and that's, that's, that's paramount, given what the history has been. And then, um, let's not say we can't work collectively forward together.
That sounds terrific, thank you Cheryl.
You're right, uh, Kathy.
I think this is a very strong board, I think it's, everybody on this board is committed to this, to the region, the school. These kids, um, the people who work in our schools, and I. I think we're really lucky to have that and in my experience of a board. And even before I was on the board, I, I've always felt that it's been a very cohesive. Collegial group of people who support each other and while they may not always have the same point of view. They, um, have respectfully listened and shared their points of view. And I think that's a huge advantage and a, um. A, a strength of the board. Um, and I think that from a. From your criteria that you put together and I, I had not seen it before now, um, but I, I think. Given my experience on the board, I'm relatively new versus some of the people here. Um, this is the beginning of my third year and it is a, there is, it is a big learning curve. There's a lot to understand because it's an unusual, it's not the typical board and. I think region nine itself has some. You, has unique attributes and the way the board functions, the way the budgeting process is, is run. Um, the joint committees, all of that, there's a, a level of complexity and. Um. Um, understanding about that, that I think is really critical to a smoothly running board. So I think that it's the experience specific to region nine, um, and. Relevant to region nine is, is very important, it's, it's a lot to, it's a, it's a, it's not a simple. Board to chair, I don't think, I think it's different in many ways than the Eastern board and the, and the Reading board. Um, similar, but also some very distinct differences, um, I also think that. Um, so to me, that's. Just personally, I, I think there's a, it's a lot to learn and I think, though, and, and to get up to speed on it, so I think. Background in that area is very helpful to really hit the ground running. Um, and there's, there's a lot going on, um, I think. Um. I think balanced leadership is very important, um. On a, for a lot of reasons, I think it's, it goes back to what you've said about. Sharing different points of view, different perspectives, um, all of those things, I think balanced leadership is. Is really important for our board, we don't have the same guidelines that the Eastern and Reading boards have and I. Um, I, I've felt in my experience that we always act in a balanced way, um, and I. Really, I think that's really important that it continue that way, um, I think it. Is again strengthens us as a board, um, and. I, um. I'm just looking through, I think, um. I think, I honestly think that the vision for governance, I would. Hope that whoever it is, and I believe that whoever it ends up being, is going to have, I don't think it's so much a personal vision. To me, I think that vision is, is the vision of us as a board and as a group and I would. Um, I think it's important that that person is, um. It, they're representing seven other people, so I think the vision for governance is, um. Everybody here has the best intentions and their heart and their beliefs are. I, I've always felt like put the students in the school first, so I think the vision. My hope would be that it's going to continue to be that.
I think, I think, uh, experience is important, especially for me, newer, newer board members, because I don't think anyone's ever been new. Um, a- and, and I think, um, you know, and the experience is helpful, um. I think similar to, you know, listening, evaluating different points of view and. That from a positive perspective, it's, you know, that the outcome from your perspective is, is very much that, that right? That we come to that balanced decision, particularly because we've got the nuance of also being board. Chris?
So I think vision for governance of region nine. Is first on this list, and I think it's appropriately first on this list, uh. Because I think that we have a choice. To commit to doing the, the thing that we've always done, for the sake of doing everything we've always done. Or have conversations like this around where we want to go and why we want to do it, how we want to do it. And I think that the role of, of a board member and of a board can be conceived of as either. Keeping the wheels on and continuing to, to just sort of drive along the road or actually steering in a direction. And I think that when this board has a reputation for getting into minutia and operations, it loses sight of where are we driving the car? And I think that the board having a clear idea of where the car is driving will help. Stay out of weeds, I think is a critical function of how we operate collectively for the next two years. Uh, I know I can speak from experience in Reading that as we've worked through having a strategic plan. The way our agendas looked changed, the way our meetings looked changed, the way we had conversations changed. Because we were pulling towards a cohesive, high level goal and expectation. And as a result, if the administration came to us and said, we need to fix the washers on the truck, we said. Is that what's necessary? Great, let's do it, we didn't have a three hour conversation about it, because we understood the three hour conversations were about. Strategic item six, one, six, two, six, three, that we'd all agreed were the, the load stars, we were going to be a better district. It's very simple to just churn hours about making operational decisions. We pay a lot of money for an exceptional central office to do that for us, and we need to let them do that for us. And so I, I think that. That is critically important, and I think that when, maybe when folks have the perception that region nine is somehow. Specifically or specially complicated, I think a lot of that is self imposed. I don't think region nine is particularly complicated, I don't think it's more complicated than Reading, I don't think it's more complicated than Eastern. It's a regional school district, there are a dozen regional school districts in the state of Connecticut. None of whom sort of hold themselves up as if they are some sort of complex animal set apart from something else. It happens to be a shared union of two towns, running a school together, the additional complexity of being your own board of finance. Is complex, but it also is simplified. Because this board doesn't have to spend time perseverating on what a local board of finance is going to do. And spend an additional six or seven or eight nights at those meetings, trying to negotiate to come back and forth and back and forth. Those meetings all happen in this room amongst the aid of us, and so. Ultimately, I think that we have to say we are a regional board of education. Working collaboratively to enable an administration to have success executing a plan that we've all agreed to. So that we can move this building forward and not get caught in the same patterns of doing the same things. Over and over and over again, and literally getting in our own way. We have experienced staff that we should trust to do that work, we should enable them and we should push in the right direction. By following the obligations of a board of education with funding and with policy and with things that. Have, have been pushed to the side because conversations go around all of these distractions. And so I think a clear vision and a clear understanding of role is critically important to. To the efficacy of a board, and that comes from, from the top down, because ultimately the chair is the one setting agendas. And the chair can decide whether we're going to have a three item agenda, all of which is tied back to our strategic plan. Or a twelve item agenda, all of which is tied to whatever the issue du jour in the community is, and I'd rather keep. This board on the straight and narrow towards a vision, toward the goal. Not only because I think that's what's best for this school, but also because I think that's what's best for sustaining the long term. Uh, health of our central office, the long term tenure of our central office, and I think it goes. Without question, that if we can sustain the same leadership for a sustained period of time. We will be more successful than whatever other rearranging of things we can do in this room would, would do. Uh, I think going on down, down the list, I don't think that, uh, I think. Experience with region nine is helpful, I don't think it is high on the list of the most important, important things with respect to leadership, particularly. When we're talking about an ER nine structure where everybody here has an understanding of how this three headed monster works, uh. I think when it comes to historical traditions, there is a. Difference between doing it the way we've always done it and having a healthy respect for what we've done and why. And there are times when you sunset. Things that we've always done for a reason, because they're antiquated, because they're outdated, because there is a better way. And we should always be challenging the way we're doing things to make sure that we're doing them as well as we can. I'm not sure what balanced leadership proportionate to voters means, uh. I think that the. Board should get behind the idea of being intentional with its committee work. And that means intentional with respect to the use of their time, the use of administrator's time, and the use of Eastern and Reading board's times. Uh, and if that means collapsing committees down to a small number and doing work more efficiently, I am a hundred percent behind that. As far as alternating between the two towns, I think it's a, a, a healthy practice in the absence of some compelling reason to, to go away from it, I think it is a. Uh, a fine way to honor the cooperative arrangements between the two towns, I don't think that's really an issue in, in this. Circumstance, but, um, it would certainly sit behind some of those other things. I think that, that hits your list.
Um, uh, overall vision, change management is important. Deference for historical traditions to the extent that they are not blocking, but moving. The vision forward and executing the strategic plan that was already, you know, agreed to by this board as well as the other. Two vision boards and, and regional boards are perhaps simpler than, than, um. Non-regional boards because you don't have to spend the time to essentially get approval from a whole separate board of finance, where there could be competing priorities. I missed a detail, but I just want to be agreed, um, I, I'm, John and Todd, if, if I, if you're comfortable with it, because as, as chair of this meeting. I have to be the last one to say something, or I feel like I should be the last one, because I don't want to influence anybody's comments. So I'll give both of you the option, I would like to be able to express my, what I'm looking for in leaders as an individual board member, but. I wanted to defer to both of you, if you want to talk about that broadly and then get into your own individual qualifications, if that's reasonable for you, so. You okay if I talk first? Well, essentially, essentially I'm asking you. I'm going to share what I would want in a leadership, not just in a chair, um, but. But I also want you both to share that broadly, you don't have to campaign for yourself, the idea is for everybody to share as individual board members. What's important for them as an individual board member, together we have to make decisions, and then we can get to, to the extent we'll circle back and we'll ask. If anyone has questions, presumably if both of you are still interested in chair, to ask questions of you, right, and then we go to ballot. Is that, is that. I don't, yeah. Unless we can't do that, that's what we're saying.
Can I suggest that, that John and Todd be given the opportunity to basically do what the rest of us have done? And speak broadly about what do you see the vision of the board being and what leadership looks like? And then you can give your position on that, and then whoever still wants to do this job can, can, can pitch themselves as far as I can.
Can we just move to vote? All right, after everybody shares their opinions on the objectives, can we just move to vote?
No, because I don't think we've answered the ultimate question.
Which is, so.
Well, to the extent that we're having a conversation around what does leadership look like, what are, what are the. You know, best practices for a board.
Everybody's going to give their opinion on that.
Right. And then the, then the question becomes, at what point do board members have the opportunity to align that conversation with what either you or John would propose?
But that becomes an interview and a campaign with a debate, why are we doing that?
I'm hearing you, you don't agree with that.
I, I don't agree, so I think it's fine, everybody gives their opinions on the qualifications, but after that, let, let's vote, I mean, why? Have a bunch of back and forth and asking, do you believe in this, what's your opinion on that? You know, if we want to talk about committees, as you said earlier, the chair doesn't pick the committees, the board picks the committees. So we'll have a committee discussion, so why do we need to have a discussion? What John thinks or I think about what committee structure should be like right now, I mean.
I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has, I, I love the idea of the sort of discussion, I think. I thank you for putting this sort of process together, but I also don't want to force anybody into a position that they, they don't feel as. Like so comfortable or, or proper for, for this procedure, so, um. I'll answer any questions after this if people prefer, like, it's fine, and, and I'll, I'll also, you know. Uh, be happy to give my own, uh, point of view, just like everyone else did on this.
So, so I'm hearing that, 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 you know, Todd respectfully doesn't want to participate, this is just fine.
No, I didn't say that, I said, I'll, I'll give you my opinion on the qualifications, like everyone else.
Okay.
But after that, we all know each other, right, we've been on the board together. We know John, we know Chris from our interactions on the tribe board, committees, and. So I, I don't know why we would need to get into a discussion on various topics and our opinions on those. It's a full board, it's not just us, like, the chair doesn't make all the decisions, the board makes all the decisions.
That would, that would have been one of my points.
Just move to a vote after everybody talks about this is what we want, point taken, we'd want to. Follow the strategic plan, is what we're hearing and the comments that everybody's putting in, those are great, so the chair, whoever it is, that's. Determined on the point toss, should take all that feedback. And go forward and, and, you know, run the meetings.
Is it too much to ask the question, to each of you, why do you want to do this? Because I don't think anybody answered the answer that question.
Or, or I guess, I guess I should say, I've been hearing that John wants to be able to just broadly talk about. These criteria with respect to leadership, but Todd prefers not, or you do?
No, I think Todd also wants to talk about it, I'm, I'm okay with this, I just don't want us to get into one discussion, like, why do you believe this? Why don't you believe this, why don't you do, I mean, it's, it's pointless, let's, everybody talk about the criteria that we're interested in.
I think there would be, uh, there could be some really good outcomes out of that, but. I think there's a lot that we're getting out of just talking about these things, so.
I think there's a lot that we're getting out of just talking about these things. So you know, we don't need to create.
So let's the three of you talk about these things, see where we go.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Todd, John, who wants to go?
Should we help a quick?
Wait, wait, I'm hearing they wait a minute. I'm I'm hearing something different and apologies for that. That that things you both want to broadly talk about, what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's right. You wanna go first, or you want me to? They're upset.
I I'm happy to.
Um, cannoli for this.
So I I think the the vision of governance, first and foremost, we abide by the bylaw, right? So what the bylaws say, the rules are, that that the rules are, and then to the extent that bylaws are silent on certain issues that may be addressed by Robert's rules or by state statute, right? So we follow the rules, right? That's that should be fairly simple. Um, I think as a as a sort of underlying principle with relation to vision of governance, we do things in power because the law says we have to, but also because it's right, because it deserved to, because taxpayers deserve to hear what we have to say and think about these important issues and how we're going to spend our money. And yes, spending money is is super, super important, but also how we're going to be educating our children. Um, so, you know, I think if if we're going to sort of place a you know, on the spectrum of different ways that um governance happens and thinking about, you know, sort of your vision for that, it is about transparency. Um, and always erring on the side of what is the best outcome for students. Um, and also being very thrifty. Uh, management of meetings and communications of administration, it again, transparency is so key. I think um, this is probably one of the most important things that the chair does. Um, and where there's a fair amount of discretion when it comes to management of meetings, communication, the tone that you strike as you're interacting with the public, whether you're in full comment or you're interacting with the board members, making sure that everyone is feeling heard and that we're doing the sort of equality of conversational turn taking. Um, I think that's something that the chair can have a lot of influence on as they're helping to sort of maintain the the sort of tone as well as the who's giving you a chance to say something at that meeting. And noticing when somebody was about to say something and they got talked over and saying, hey, hold on a second. I I think you had something to say there too, it's just like making sure that you're encouraging that environment. Um, I think when we're talking about experience, I I know it's a very convenient point of view for me to have that I think um, dealing with the Board of Finance is particularly um complex and can take a lot of your time and create a lot of gray hairs where, you know, before there there were none. Um, but um, I I accept the fact that there is complexity in a regional structure and certainly the that, you know, the act of being your own Board of Finance is still you know, is is a thing that is very complex. Um, I think when you when you think about um some of the the sort of less um popular jobs and the things that people maybe aren't so keen about, like going and presenting to the towns and and sort of making sure that you're enthusiastic about creating support for the the budgets. Um, I love that stuff. So um, fine, but I think ultimately, uh, you know, when we're talking about experience, I I think it's kind of six of one happened on the other. A lot of the experience gained from going through the pandemic and frankly, working right alongside Todd as well as Chris during the pandemic as a as a chair um amongst the three boards. I I think we got to know each other really well, and I think we um, you know, almost always agree on sort of, you know, the right course of action um and and how we should sort of run those schools and try to get back. Um, historical traditions and new ideas. I think this is probably one of the the key areas where um I I will come out and say like, I I respect the heck out of what has happened after uh over the last six years, what this institution is, what this school offers to its children. I I think it's not a huge secret that, you know, my kids started high school at Fairchild Wheeler and moved here um about five weeks ago, and it has been just wonderful. The the I I think the climate that they've come into, the the peers that they're interacting with, the teachers, I have been I've been so gratified by the support that this school offers its students and the fact that they've been able to thrive and that they've been able to have a really first-class education. Thank you to Karen and others who said, hey, make sure you get this teacher because he's gonna be great for your kids in particular. So.
You have to go in the first place.
Well, so anyway, thank you. Um, and so I think there's there's a lot to be said about what is great about this school already, no doubt, but I also think we're an inflection point. I think in in the world, we're an inflection point. I think, you know, chat G P T is not a fad. We are in a world that is going to change radically in the next ten years. And it is no longer about, oh, is my job tech group or is my job A I group or is there's no industry that's that that's going to be immune to this, and it is going to be vitally important that we are embracing the sort of new ways of doing things and making sure that we're preparing these kids for even just going into college in the new world. But then certainly beyond that, how they're going to thrive, how they're going to be able to maintain uh a sort of livelihood and, you know, support their families and all those things that hopefully have as good, if not better an impact on the world as we're all having. Like, we hope that they're able to actually sort of achieve those things. So I am I feel a sense of urgency about the sort of side of new ideas and making sure that we're supporting. I'm I think there are things that we would have hoped to include in the program of study this year. And they're not going to be there. And I think there are probably many members here who say, oh, man, maybe next year. My kids are freshmen. We're talking about something that now is going to be available to them as juniors. Right? And it's not just about my kids. I'm here for the whole community, but that's a mile marker that resonates with me. If we're going to start to sort of respond to, make sure that we're supporting the new ideas that I know our administrators want to make, we have to approach that with urgency. Proportionate voters, I think that's I I don't think there's any disagreement really there. Um, and then the sort of R nine committees and the ER nine committees, we all want to try to drive efficiencies. I don't think that, you know, anyone here is um, you know, see the we we want to do it this way simply because it's been done that way. It when when Region Nine needs to have a committee that is unto itself and not a joint committee, it's going to be for a good reason. And I don't think anyone here is, you know, just, you know, the gonna be stubborn for the sake of being stubborn. Um, and then the alternating chair, I I agree with that. I think it's a good healthy practice, and I don't think that um, I I don't think that we want it for the sake of um, you know, change, you know, make make a change there. If there is a if if there was a the sort of structural reason or if there was a, you know, if a candidate simply said, you know, didn't appear, then certainly you could break that convention in the case, but um, I don't think we're facing that at all. So I don't see there's there's any reason to to do anything a different there.
I won't move.
Yes, sorry.
Todd, not it not not a thing you would just the same time overall.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'll just keep it to the list here. Um, so, yeah, the list, um, I I agree with most, not everything that's on here for the criteria. Um, because as as I mentioned, like the view on the R nine committees, the chair just has one view. Everybody gets to say what our committees are gonna be. So it it's great. I've got one view. John may have the same or a different view, but the board makes the decision. It's not the chair making decisions. It's not a dictatorship. I we, again, have all worked together over the years on the board and various committees. We've all led, the new members have led, and so we all have a lot of experience and we all have a lot of historical tradition, which I think is good. We all have a lot of new ideas, and we have new ideas that you were doing on your board, you're doing on your board that we weren't doing here, which is great, that we want to bring those in. And we have the strategic plan as a new idea, which we haven't had before. And I think, you know, whoever ends up chair, we're we're gonna incorporate those things in here. And we're also going to incorporate any new idea. On our board, if you have an idea and you want it on the agenda, if there's a topic you want to talk about, you bring it, it's app, right? So I think there's that balance of, again, historical traditions, new ideas, we we do that. I think that's a key one. Um, I I think, again, the rest of the list, I'm not gonna drain it all. I I guess I agree with some of them, some of them I don't, but I think at this point, we should prepare for it. Well, we want to hear your thoughts, and then we should move on and vote. Your other officers too, like this as well.
Sure. Um, and 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 I think.
And whoever wins.
Yeah.
We're gonna listen, everybody's gonna work together. It's a good board, as everybody's said, right? I mean, we'll work together. We'll listen to new things. We'll listen to historical experience, right? We'll listen to vision, but it's just not one person's vision. It's the entire board's vision for where we go.
Yep. Thank you. I I think um, so so I'll share my view, which is some of you may think it's an outlier view, but this is my view as an individual board member, not a chair. Um, so is that I think there is a, we're individually somewhat entrenched, myself included, somewhat entrenched in a particular way of working. So so I see a clear and even just what I'm hearing today, a clear ability distinction between innovation and a bias toward that and versus respect for change and and just based on um, respect for tradition, right, or or history or experience. And I think, you know, my bias is toward somebody new leading in general. And 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 for me, it's not just the chair but the all of the officers. And and that's why I question, you know, for me, it's all about qualifications. And that's also the balance point, just to be clear. The intent of that is I've I've heard anecdotally, you know, we should have, you know, people don't like the party affiliation, right? Um, people feel felt unduly influenced based on party um or history, um both Republicans and Democrats. I've heard that over the last seven years. I've heard Democrats say Republicans have influenced selection, and that's what balance means. There's too many Democrats. We should have Republican leadership. I've also heard, hey, there are some, you know, we have too many Democrats. So I've heard that. That's the intent of that. Um, but again, not to say that there's consensus. I'm just pointing out what I've heard as an individual resident of Reading. Um, and so I think there's a there's a time for us to to, I I think we all have to get outside of our individual comfort zones with respect to those who have a bias toward innovation. Okay, let's think about is this traditionally important? And on the flip side, those who are have a bias toward continuity and momentum and no no real tweaks to talking about you know, whether or not we approve Jason attending a conference. Um, those those views perhaps should consider, do we really need that on on the agenda? And and saying it is one thing, doing it is another. Having a chair that puts their own personal biases um aside and drives consensus for me is more important than anything else. And I I do believe that that while we did make balanced decisions over the last two years, the fact that two years ago, it was my personal experience now, we had the contested elections that we did and the way it was handled didn't serve the board well. And the joint committees, not joint committees, also did not serve the board well. So I will have a a my vote will go to whoever says, okay, I can balance these two views. It's not easy. However, um it's not easy to balance these two views. But I can go outside the comfort zone and so because the priority should be for Region Nine to implement its tactical things for each year as far as mapping it back to the to the plan. That should be the driver of what we do. If that means we have to approve Jason's conference, that's fine. If that means we have to talk about funding the field, that's fine, as long as we can link it back to that and everybody understands the reason. Or at least the consensus does. So I think that's kind of where I'm falling out. Um, and appreciate everybody for indulging me in this interesting agenda um and sharing their views. Thanks. I guess with that.
So Cheryl, what I think I heard you say.
Um, and and we can we can all join uh Jason's book group uh in in a couple of weeks. Um, okay, so so to to that, I think unless there's anybody else that would like to say something, we can go to the next item on the agenda, which is written ballot.
You can tell me that I'm out of line, Cheryl, and they can decline if they want to, but I'm still curious in fifteen to thirty seconds, the why do you want to be chair of this board for the next two years? I mean, if there's no answer, that's sort of an answer.
I I guess I guess.
And you're still forcing this point. Why don't we vote?
The the intent of this exercise is to try to break the tie. Um, and so and so.
Let's vote and see if we have a tie. And if we have a tie, then let's draw lots like it says in the bylaws. Everybody's talked about what they want. So we know, we know each other. So can we just vote?
Todd, I think you're demonstrating the type of leadership that I can't support.
Okay, that's fine. I don't think you're gonna vote for me anyway, so can we still vote?
I I think I think I think I I've heard from Todd or Chris, is anybody, anybody else? Um, do you want to vote? Do you not want to vote? Do you want to say something else?
I have a just a question around in our previous votes, Jason shares the vote, counts the ballots.
Um, I I will. Sarah will be doing it. I I checked with counsel. I checked with, yeah, I checked with counsel just for purposes of the record, again, for public record. Um, it is appropriate in this instance for me to do the ballots, but to avoid any any concern, I I called Sarah and said, um, you know, can you count? So she's gonna.
I will count. And um I will have um when when Glenn, we're gonna text, when you're gonna text me, and then when you're in person, you're going to fill out the ballot.
Okay, I don't have your number, Sarah. But I bet you can find mine.
Are we doing multiple rounds?
I was gonna say indicate number one in the top round. We're not gonna do.
Um, I will put them in.
One, Julie. We should do one.
Just one. Okay. Hold on, Glenn.
I just emailed it to you, if that is quicker. I can also email you my vote if that doesn't matter. I've got a computer in front of me now.
I also texted.
Okay, got it.
So, um, I I I don't think people are, I mean, have their existing conditions. And I think that you're likely to be it's it's probably, I the bylaws, I mean, if you were able to get that, I think, whether or not you think that's forward, the time, the bylaws. Say, we have a change, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So it it doesn't seem as though the bylaws give us right to just say, can we just ask for it to to? right, to just say, can we just ask for it to, to, to start over?
What I mean, so, so I think, I think.
It says if you haven't done it, I don't know exactly what the words are, but if the words are if you haven't done something in three years, then something happened. So you don't get to say, I'm doing it again through.
Right.
So we can have another meeting.
Me, me, you don't have, you don't have to get in the meeting.
So, so, so I think, I think that one, so I did get, I think we get guidance exactly to, to your question. Um, but, you know, we can, we can entertain nomination, so it doesn't have to be, so then, then we um, and otherwise we can choose to. As far as timetable, staying, um, you know, effectively whatever we decide that we'll the two years unless somebody wants to provide to do this again, um, but the anticipation of this tie. Motion to the floor.
I mean, there's a lot of things.
You just never get a lot to do, it's sounding like leadership to me.
I, 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 I would, I would love to nominate Karen, but I don't think she's. Because I hope that the tie will be broken. Um, I, I think one thing I'll offer is, is would the, you know, would the board consider Todd and John as chair?
So, to, to, um.
We're, we're breaking the Eastern running. We're not breaking the chair tradition, but we're breaking this. Somebody's gotta make that motion. Um, yeah, again, I'm drawing it out there and think, because I, I do feel strongly that breaking the tie would be better, but maybe not, maybe, maybe people don't, maybe people feel like it's.
I'm just having a little trouble hearing what the motion was and stuff. It all got a little garbly.
Glenn, it's, it's, we're trying to come up with ideas to break a tie. Um, one of them was having John and Todd serve as chair, vice chair respectively. The question on the table is, is then who takes what seat? Um, because I did also ask, you know, it has to be for the same position for the entire two years. Um, not to say that somebody can't resign and we, we elect the chair, um, you know, when that person resigned, and that happened when, you know, I stepped in on an interim basis prior to elections, right, even now. So it's, it's, it's the, the trigger is someone resigning, and then you elect for the duration of that term.
Or the board's going to the law.
I, I think, again, I think I don't know if this will be the great show for the board. So can we just draw lots, and again, if somebody else wants to run the board, let's just do this, is it over?
Yeah, I, as, as long as it can be considered a, a sort of valid little lot poll, I guess, I'm comfortable with doing it.
I, I would love to draw a lot right now, let's draw a lot of chocolate right now, but, um, it's, I mean, I'm nowhere, and I don't even play one on TV, but it says if such officers are not chosen after one month because of a tie vote for the members, the tie shall be broken by law. And, you know, I don't know, I have to defer to somebody who's got so.
There isn't a tie after thirty days.
Right, we have to break it in thirty days, we can break it now.
No, no, that's the opposite.
I think the bylaws do not allow.
After one month.
Not doing anything else, I, I, well, so, but I, you, you mentioned there's important work for us to do. Is there anything stopping us from doing that work right now with Cheryl in that interim position for the next how many days, fifteen days?
No, I just don't, I just don't think that there's any, there's value in not making a decision now.
Yeah.
I just don't think that quick kicking the can down the road is helpful for any, but for the, for the people on this board, for the feelings they have towards each other, I just think this is gonna make it worse.
In, in theory, you could comply with this bylaw. By drawing lots today, the purpose of electing an interim chairperson until thirty days have expired, at which point then you vote for the board. You draw lots to the interim chairperson, and everybody agrees that whoever that is, they all vote for.
Yeah.
And then that person becomes the permanent chair, and we're basically drawing lots to decide who did. It's silly, and it defeats the purpose.
Oh, then we draw lots, and then everyone agrees to abide by those lots, and you cast over a chair that's unanimous.
Right, which is a silly, or, right?
Mary Lee, can you read the bylaw again, just to clarify?
Yeah.
We're at the end of thirty days from our, just from our December meeting. We have a few days, um, but we're, we're at the end.
Well, the crazy part is, is it says, it was there.
No, because John still has it up.
I, I had it, the screen got, okay, that, that's me, no. I was like, what?
I didn't see it.
It says if, oh, because I just, I, I looked it up, I, I was in. If such officers are not chosen after one month because of a tie vote of the members, the tie shall be broken by law. So what is one month? Is it twenty eight days, is it thirty days?
And I, I did get, I did get clarity, um, from, from, um, counsel on that. Um, the, the, and I explained the situation, that thirty days, you start the clock with, and she said yes. In, in the absence of any, there's nothing else written in the statute, so what we did in December was, was permissible, was appropriate in the context of this. So theoretically, I guess you could keep doing this, you know, forever, um, you know, uh, but, you know, I'm sure qualitatively it's not something we want to entertain, at least not.
Right, Cheryl, I'm confused by that statement.
So, so I think.
December nineteenth was our meeting, it's January twelve, so it hasn't.
Hasn't been thirty days since the organization.
It hasn't been a month in any way, shape or form, sorry, no months that are that short, at least in my experience.
Do we want to ask?
Would you like me to ask counsel? Because I can, well, right now, if we could just go ahead. And I can, I, we could suspend the bylaws and then have the, and have, and have a flip. I, I, is that how it works?
I'll, you know what, I, I don't know, but if you'd like.
All agree on the outcome of the lots, then we've broken the tie, and it can hold for ten more days. The tie is broken unless somebody wants to get together and re-vote. We determined it, I mean, we can call another meeting next week, get together and vote again.
So I have counsel on the, I have counsel on the phone. So the question is, can we draw lots now, or do we need to wait thirty? To wait the full thirty days from, um, the nineteenth, correct? Well, we're gonna talk quick, we just. Hello, this is Sarah Scripani, how are you? Uh, I'm, I have a, we, um, let me stand closer to the window. Well, let me walk outside so that I can get a whole bars, and I will, or I stand. Do you wanna try to use my phone? We're seeing two bars. Two bars, hi, hello, how are you? Yes, please. And I'm, I'm gonna stand very still in that mood. We don't always have great cell phone reception. So our, our question, our question is this. The last meeting was on December nineteenth. It is not a full thirty days. Can we do a coin toss or draw lots and have that? Can you hear me? No, it's okay, so the que, the question is this. The last board meeting was December nineteenth. It's not a full thirty days. Can we draw lots to, to choose the chair? Or do we need to wait the full thirty days?
Everyone's in agreement.
No, if the, if the, they, there is, um, it's a fifty fifty split. Um, if I can read it to you.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, 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 it's statutory language, and so, no, would you like to be? Okay. Okay, so, so the answer is yes, is, is all, yes. Okay. Okay, so it's, it's the, these, it's, um, okay, so here's what it is. Each voting member shall cast his or her vote for the election of officers. The vote of each member shall be reduced to, to writing and shall be made available for public inspection within forty eight hours excluding Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays. The results of the election shall also be recorded in the minutes of the meeting, and the minutes shall be available for public inspection at a reasonable, at all reasonable times. If such officers are not chosen after one month because of a tie vote, members, the tie vote of members, the tie shall be broken by law. Okay. Yes, Cheryl is the temporary chair. Can you pull up the minutes from the last meeting? That is correct. No, that's correct, Cheryl is not contesting. Well, that's not entirely true, for thirty days. Okay, all right, let me, let me, let me read, let me read to you the, the motion. Um, so the motion was, um, oh, sorry. Keep scrolling. Okay. Move that the Region Nine Board of Education appoint as temporary officers the officers who served in the, in those positions at the time of the bi-annual election, and they had served in those positions until their successors are elected pursuant to the bylaws of this board. Okay, perfect. Yep. Yes. Okay. Okay, all right, thank you so much, Jonah. Move just to, is a coin, the same.
Is a coin, is a coin, the same as.
Yes.
We have a lot.
Okay, thank you very much, okay. Thank you, okay, enjoy your soccer game. Always enjoyable, thank you, okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll offer up something that, that may, will make sense, because I just said, well, some contesting it. If we, if we want to break a tie, and I'm saying we as a board, I'm willing to chair. Uh, actually, I want the chair because I'd rather have that than a tie. That said, I can't move the motion from the floor, so I'm totally fine if somebody doesn't want to move it, and I'll, I'll take that as a not willing to entertain it, um, but, and then we flip a coin.
So procedurally, where are we at? This could be a new ballot with three candidates. Theoretically.
Can you clarify? I need to.
So, so, so what, what I'm proposing, I, I can't, I'm chairing the meeting, I'm chair, so I can't move anything from the floor.
Yes.
You can't, it's a small board.
You know, um, I'm trying to change practice. Uh, and, and if, if, if someone wants to move it from the floor, the motion from the floor to elect who's chair, I would want to do it because it's my preference to have that over flipping a coin. However, if I'm in the minority, literally, if I'm the only one who has that view, then I am, then, then we flip a coin, and then we don't need to move anything from the floor. I think that that should procedurally be okay. I, I did, um, ask that of Rebecca, not specifically me, but with respect to a motion entertained after a tie, and that, that is acceptable to do from a process perspective.
Uh, I would personally be comfortable with it. I would, um, I would also be comfortable with that. I would maybe ask that we recess in caucus to understand that what, what we're really talking about here.
I don't know, of course, permit to do that.
Yeah, it's standard recess, you go with the caucus.
What you're saying is then that you and John and Todd wouldn't be considered, or it would be.
Do we have to go from the floor?
What it sounded, well, here's, here's what I'll, here's what I'll do, this is what I, it sounded like Cheryl was suggesting. I would make a motion that the Region Nine Board appoint Joe Graziano the chair for the two-year period of twenty fourteen to twenty twenty six. And that would supersede any, any other election discussion or votes. That's what it sounds like Cheryl got from counsel as a potential solution.
Or for that, not anybody, right, Kathy, you know, or Karen, Karen Ray said no, like, you know, then that, that's an option. That, that is perfectly acceptable.
And so then, in theory, if it was a second to my motion and a majority supported it, you would be elected, we'd be done, and move on to the next round.
She would be elected without voting?
We would, we would vote right now. Up or down on Cheryl, basically.
But wait, but that's different than enough, quite, I thought that, just so I'm.
Yep.
Is there, is your, is this suggestion that the board, that someone make a motion that we vote as a board to appoint you as chair for the next two years for going on election of the two candidates who are currently nominated for chair?
Right, that would be the election.
Is, is that the idea? Is that the thought?
Correct.
And that would be reduced to a, on a paper ballot, so.
Hold on to motion and make your chair.
Right.
So, do I have to wait for a person a second to make a comment?
I made a motion on the expectation that if somebody seconded, we could talk about it, we wouldn't have the conversation about whether or not.
Well, I, I was saying I'm interested in.
I heard, I heard a motion, but I didn't hear a second.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I fully understand the implications of it, so I, I'd like to understand it, and I I think perhaps a recess could help us to understand that.
Basically, it's, you're not, there's no election.
Yeah.
It's the motion to elect her, we vote on it, the motion. It's the motion to elect her, we vote on it, the motion passes, she's chair.
And the council has said that's okay.
The, the council, the, so there, 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 there are a couple of options, right? We could have made this a three, four-way, eight-way race, right? Um, and, and, but someone has to move that from the board. It cannot be me. Um, you know, so, so i- in the event of, you know, or what we played out was we had the election, right? We had two people still, were still a split vote and then at that point, any motion can be entertained, right? Whether it's me or anybody else, um, that's on the board, right? You have to be elected to region I. Um, so then, yes, then that, that's, that's the specific question that was asked and that's the specific response I got.
And how is this preferable to a tie?
It, it, it's one person, one board member's view on, on preferable to a tie. That's a fair comment.
How is this different than the criteria we just went over where it should rotate back and forth?
It, 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 that, that, that's, that's fair too, which is why tho- those, those questions were there. Um, and, you know, the last slide, what kind of elections were options we discussed, right? So, so absolutely fair. This has to, the, the intent is to, is to try to get consensus where we have none, more than anything. For me, that's what.
And that's what I, I value about this concept is at least at that point, a majority of the board would be supportive of somebody. And right now, that's not true. Uh, or they wouldn't be and it would fail and you'd just keep going, which is, which is why, you know, tongue in cheek or not, the suggestion of Karen meets the qualifications of somebody who lives in Easton and is, you know, potentially somebody who, you know, derive a consensus. But she's gonna run away to go.
Cool.
Because we're not in, because there wasn't a second to the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair. It's, it's.
I mean, we all, I think, are in this for the right reason and we all will rally around whoever is drawn by law.
Yeah, I think that's right.
I, I was gonna say a similar thing. I think I I think continue, I think further discussion to other people's points starts to become divisive.
Yeah.
And I would suggest that we avoid that because we have not been a divided board. And I, I, to Mary Lee's point, I think that we are all on the same, of the same mind that the person who ends up being the chair, we, everybody will support that person and rally around. I don't, um, I, I, I would, do I, I, I mean, I would move, I, 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 I think we should go to a draw lots situation. I would, if that's a motion, I would make the motion that because the board has been tied three times now, we proceed to a, to drawing of the lots.
We have a motion still on the floor.
There, 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 yeah, there's two competing motions, neither of which has a second, right? So I think.
Right, nobody seconded it, so I don't think there is a motion on the board. I mean, th- there's me trying to do that, some people can talk about it, but they don't vote for anybody. Uh, so, you know, I'll, I'll withdraw the motion because the discussion around it seems to be that there's not going to be a consensus. Then we'll just tie on that motion, you know, continue this. Uh, I, I would, I'm trying to think about ways to have productive and not divisive conversations. And Kathy, you said we haven't been a divided board. I think we've been a divided board since the eight of us sat down. Uh, I, I don't think it's, you know, we haven't come to blows over issues. They haven't really come to blows at all. I think we've been very collegial about the, the situation. But we've been fundamentally divided over five ballots or six ballots, whatever it is now. And, you know, uh, that's, I think this conversation is healthy around where do we want to go? Why would we go there? I was sort of obviously distressed or disappointed not to hear why the folks want to chair it. So now I went, would kind of turn the other direction and say, why would any of us support any of the people that we've sort of steadfastly supported? Like, what's the, what's the distinction that folks see when everybody says, well, rally around whoever? Okay, well, why is one whoever better than the other?
Well, I think it's fair to go back to Kathy. We made a motion and I think we need to respect that motion.
Kathy, you were gonna say something? You said, Mary Lee said we respect our motion. Kathy, well, I'll defer to procedure. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think with respect to the motion on the floor, I think Chris had a motion that wasn't seconded. Kathy had a motion. So I, I think I'm, I feel like we've given both, um, talking points, if you will, or potential motions enough time, equal time. Um, so.
Well, we haven't seconded her motion. I'll second her motion to draw lots right now. We haven't had a chance to second. I'll second the motion to draw lots Kathy put on the floor. So now it's been seconded. Let's go on.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
The same question I asked and was told, let's just vote, let's just vote, let's just vote. So I guess nobody wants to explain why they want to support it, which is fine.
Okay, um, so hearing a motion on the floor that the region I, Board of Education should go to, uh, so I think chair by lot. Um, again, we'll get the wording right. Please tell me, you know, that that's, we'll net on the fly. Um, so we have the motion seconded on the floor. Um, so I'll do a roll. Um, unless Gwen, you have any kind of in the, in spirit conversational, or taking anything to add prior to the roll?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, Gwen?
Yes.
Karen? John?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Mary Lee? Chris?
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Uh, I'll vote no. Um, motion carries, uh, we flip a coin. All right.
Is that me?
Yeah.
Am I the coin?
Are you the coin?
Am I the coin?
It's a game of pango, see, find Sarah.
Wait, Sarah.
I was at work. I have, I have, I have a coin. It's a quarter. Is there a special coin and I will make sure that you get the seed? Do they, do they, I, I, I tell you.
I think she, I think she's gonna look by.
Okay.
Who's head?
Um, all right, Todd is heads and John is tails. Please don't drop straight. Please don't drop straight. It is heads. Does somebody want to come take a look at it? Okay.
We'll verify, yes.
And there, do we verify? Okay. And there it is.
We, we trust you, Sarah.
Yeah, okay. So it is, the chair is, um, the chair is top.
All right, well, well, congratulations. Um, and, and I.
Can we not redo that?
I will, I will.
We'll repeat it again right now.
Cheryl, you don't like it, will you just, why don't we do the rest of the elections? You continue to run that and then hand it to me and all.
You guys want to do that? Everyone?
We should get into the list.
All right, so now we've got the vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Cheryl.
And I'll nominate her.
Oh, do we have a second?
No, we, we need.
Because we don't know.
Yeah.
Are there others? Nominations? We just had Cheryl.
Oh, um, yeah.
How many coins you got, Sarah?
Just one. We can flip it a lot of times if we must, or I could, yeah, put it on my finger and have it fall. All right. Gwen, if you could please, um, email and text me, that would be great.
Yep.
Right, and the vice chair is Cheryl.
I'm like, oh, we're gonna get a tie. And Gwen, I would have been fine, you know, I just couldn't want a tie. Okay.
Very happy. Congratulations, Cheryl. It's all good. And thank.
Something to nomination.
Well, thank you for, uh, everybody for your patience with me tonight. I have a lot of family stuff going on and, um, like that. So if I disappear rapidly, it's nothing personal. Just a lot, a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, treasurer, nomination of the treasurer. Wait, who, who was?
We need numbers.
Anyone, anyone? Doesn't work, less working secretary.
Not supposed to sell it that way. What's everybody backing down?
Treasurer, treasurer.
Yeah.
You know, hiding names, so.
Nomination.
The nomination for the floor, any, 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 uh, brave volunteers?
John. I can't do without getting through.
Uh, you don't work.
I'm so curious.
It's like a sick. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, to submit to them, but it would be one.
I could do it if I really don't have to be the real, like, Sarah does it, right? I mean, I'm not, I, I mean, but I could, I could do it and then resign when I got somebody else to step in or something, but, so I'm just putting that out there.
Mary Lee, Karen? Truly, it's not a, I, I, I'm all honest. Have you seen my map? I, I could withdraw my, my seat as vice chair or something else.
Chris, are you open to it?
If you're telling me I have to, don't have to do it.
Yeah, you don't.
It's really not hard, Chris.
Kathy doesn't want to do it and Karen doesn't want to do it, I'm gonna nominate, nominate Kathy for secretary.
Yeah, I would, I would too, so.
I guess you are.
This is how I became the ready secretary too. That's my better judgment.
So, so, wait, treasurer.
We are nominating Chris.
Okay, we're nominating Chris.
And, and Gwen dropped off, but I think, I think she was, she'll be okay, I don't think.
She's voting with her feet. I don't think she was jumping up and down.
Hope for God anyway. John got five somehow, I don't know.
You had to work for me.
Time to leave him to the votes of this, he's gonna have to work.
Someone can always resign early. From the next person. Is Gwen back in the meeting?
Gwen is gone, so you have seven votes now.
Yep.
And I think she's firmly disconnected.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's.
So you can go with the seventh vote.
I'd be happy to leave you gone, but.
Okay, uh. Now, do you want to, she counts? Don't make Chris proud.
Put it for the coin.
Great.
Treasurer gets to keep the coin. That's right.
Yes.
Keep her the money.
Um, so, Chris?
Congratulations. No one's already accepted, thank you. Uh, I nominate Kathy to be secretary.
I second.
Agreed. I feel bad, you're walking around. I know, it's totally fine.
When I became running secretary, I think three people declined before me.
That is a mandate.
And I don't want.
Seriously, there's gotta be another way, but you know what I mean? Exactly.
I will give you this beautiful.
Well, it's, it's still yours.
And you, secretary.
So Kathy, Kathy is the secretary.
Start again.
So. Okay.
Do you want to use some drowns?
Yeah, we just, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, and I think Gwen's not, so we don't need to do a roll, so the person, we're good. It's, uh, 8:00 PM.
On a Friday, who was the secretary?
Sorry.
Mary Lee and Karen.
I know.